Hi guys, I think we're gonna go ahead and get this started. We'd just like to thank everyone for attending tonight. If you have any questions or concerns, please raise your hand and it will be called on. We will get to everybody who had questions or concerns, statements that they would like to make. And I think you should go ahead and let me take the floor.
Alright, so my name is Nathan Schmitz. I've been a resident at Dyke here for about fifteen years. Part of the reason why we're doing this meeting tonight was being at city council meetings that I go to and learning some things and a lot of information that I've read through Facebook messaging, the comments. I thought it would have been a great idea that we actually come together as a community group to try to get an understanding of what it would take to get a pool, if it were a pool, or if it's not really a thing that is feasible. So, basically bringing, I'm just gonna read right up. Bringing the community together to discuss the future of a pool, provide a city council with information to make informed decisions based on the public's interest and support of the property. So, some of the facts that I want to point out, and I encourage any one of you, I think you all have the sheet in front of you, that if any of these facts are incorrect, please correct me instantly, please. So, facts per city council meetings. Number one is, the old pool is dead. There will not be any more funds spent on the pool to repair it. It's done. And on that note, demolition is gonna be starting. I'm just gonna say sooner than later, but I don't know if it'll be this year or not, but it's being demoed. It'll go back to its original state, or I'm assuming grass or something along those lines, up until the time comes, a new pool would ever be rebuilt. The city has agreed to spend some funds to pay for architectural design of a new pool, and they'll, they agreed to do that as soon as now. The city does not, I'm gonna repeat this, does not have bonding capacity to build a pool. So, we're not here talking about bonding, because we're not gonna be able to do it. They did however say, there could be some bonding potential down the road, but probably not gonna be the bonding potential for a brand-new pool, a full amount. So, what that comes down to is funding. How do we, how does the city pay for a pool? It's gonna come down to citizens fundraising. In order to do fundraising, we have to have a leader. And that's what I, my biggest goal is. If there is going to be a pool, there's gotta be somebody within this room or somewhere in the community that leads that charge. It's not gonna be me. I love the community, I just don't have the time to do that charge. So, along in my agenda, what we're gonna talk about a little bit would be deciding if the citizens of Dyke even want it. Is it something that we want to proceed? If so, who's gonna lead it? There's things, there's so much more than raising the funds. Just these five ones, which are accounting, investing are just the ones that I need a few notes on. And then funding, when you think about funding, yeah, the city's gonna pay for the architectural side of things to maybe get the design started, but then you gotta look at fundraisers. And when you look at fundraisers, one thing I like to say, it's a lot of frickin' cupcakes, like. So, it's gonna be maybe just people writing checks. I don't know how you, how you make those kind of money. Grants, there are grants available. A lot of those grants are gonna come after a certain percentage of the funds are gonna be raised for your credit. So, sixty-five percent. You really haven't, we've been kind of given a dollar amount for a pool and kind of taken away from that. It doesn't really matter, which it is, regardless, it's a lot of money, millions of dollars. So, we have to take part of that. I did also, a couple of funding. So, some of the things that I'm thinking of is, even if we decide that the city wants to move forward, it isn't even feasible to be able to raise millions of dollars. Even so, somebody that needs that. Before we leave, I have a QR code that I wanted to do. I want to also specify that this is my, my survey, and Heather up here has been also kind of my, my, we've been working together, okay? Trying to, to come up with something to bring the community together and stay out of the Facebook chats and try to see how we can come across in getting a resolution to move forward or just everybody's input in a room and not through social media, which translates to that. So, in this survey, my intentions and my, what I will be doing is providing the information to the city council, basically to say, based on these, it would be my recommendation or my, my opinion to maybe go forward or do the design. The city wanted to do a design, I, Heather and I, there's a couple of other people in the room that we've had a nice talk with. It wasn't five people's responsibility to say, spend this kind of money to do design on a pool, and I didn't want that option. So, we're looking at a group. Is this something the group wants to do? And if that's what the group wants to do, I'll come to the city council and say, the group wants it and not five people. On that note, the expense part, or architectural drafting of a pool, this is rough. I don't know how accurate this is, but I'm gonna shoot this number out, it could be in excess of a hundred thousand dollars. That's another reason why I didn't want to say, do this. If it was a couple hundred or a couple thousand, maybe, but when you're talking about a hundred thousand dollars, that's not five people's decision, and the city needs to have better information if they should move forward.
Just for all the, all the planning and stuff that needs to take place, the designing, and then we'll have more of an idea at that point of maybe like total cost of a facility or different options that we wanna look into based on what we think the facility will look like. But just for those basic plans to be drawn, that's what we're gonna do.
Yep, so, and I've kind of heard that it could be in phases. So, I don't know that it would be one hundred thousand dollars right out of the gate, but I do know that it's going to be a substantial amount. So, I guess on that note, I'm gonna kind of, I'm gonna give it back to Sadie as far as where we, where we need to hold the room as far as answering our questions. But really, it was about bringing people together to ask the questions, see if it's, if there's interest in trying to find that individual who's going to lead this charge to, you know, find the fundraising and the person that's gonna, where's the fundraising money go to? Where does the money go as far as investing and all those other things that? And just a couple of hours of my brainstorming and thinking is like, this is not a project that's just gonna take. I mean, this is a, it's a part-time job, you have to give things up to want to build this pool. I can't do that, so. I would like to see a pool. In order for me to see a pool, some people's gotta step up. So, this was my stepping up to bring the crew together to see who's gonna take the next step.
I'd like to say, and Nathan's our fire chief, those of you that don't know that, so he already puts in quite a lot of time for us already, so thank you for your time.
I will state that Witherly is moving forward with the new pool and their price of their new pool is eight point one million dollars.
Can you talk to what that maybe looks like in terms of size and stuff? Is it external to the, I mean, obviously, it's going to probably be a little bit more than that.
Well, this is also twenty twenty-five pricing.
Right, oh yeah, I know that, but I mean, like in size and footprint?
I'm not sure size, it looks like there's, you know, eight or four, seven lanes. The only thing we probably wanted to hear is this splash pad, because we have a splash pad.
But not by print, it's not a whole aquatic.
This is a whole aquatic thing.
Yeah, Witherly is a whole aquatic thing.
And that's so similar to what Grace Cender has, who probably thinks, but not thinking that big.
Would it get a splash pad?
But you want something that big? Like a lot bigger than what we have? Okay, so the way that this looks is that there is lanes of, lanes here, which you wanna have, you wanna have a swim team. So, if you wanna keep the swim team going, then you'd need to have lanes of six lanes in order to make that happen. And then there's a slide, which we have now, but there would be a new slide area. And then there's a zero entry, which would allow for people to, zero entry into the pool, which we do not have currently with now. So, it is not necessarily much bigger than what we have now. It is a little bit bigger, but it would change the footprint for sure.
Well, zero entry takes up a lot more space than what we have.
Yeah, it wouldn't be a big pool.
And we literally have to have zero entry now, which is big, right?
Absolutely. And then of course, we don't have that.
So, if you go to Iowa, it's put up a pool last year. They spent around two point five million dollars, only had three lanes. So, if you, if you do want to double that, you're talking at least five million, just to start two years ago. What's this year, you know, two years from now, prices, if you afford that eight million dollar price?
That's just a pool, that's not a pool, a shower house, it's less than a pool.
You mean the five million, what are you talking about?
There, there was a two point five, with a shower house. It's, there's, Witherly's eight lanes with the shower house there. So, if we were to do something to have towards Iowa, it's in.
And it's really, really includes the new parking lot.
Right.
Which he would, I mean, that's a compliment.
And then have they set a timeframe on their plan? Is their funding set already?
They're bonding.
They bonded before.
Very soon.
They bonded last year. And to be truthful with you guys, well, the state of Iowa has now changed the way you can bond for things. If we wanted this pool to go forward this year, or next year, we wouldn't be able to bond it for in November. We wouldn't have time to do that, because you have to give time to the public to draw interest and everything else. Now, we cannot bond for anything for the next two years. So, this, this process is not gonna be an overnight thing for me to do it next year after two years from now, if the city could have enough to help with, possibly.
Is everybody hearing this all okay?
Maybe a little bit.
Is our budget saving from now to the last two years if we put towards maybe the designing side? Because I think the group of us who had met had started calling to different local pools, like El Dorado, like El Dorado, and I guess there's like twenty other pools now, so like that doesn't, really isn't relevant anymore, but for the design side, to see what our options and scope could be, it's like that, possibly?
Yes, so we have set aside funds from fiscal twenty-four, fiscal twenty-five, since we weren't open. And then if you include fiscal twenty-six, which is what we're in right now, we'll have about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for architect and demolition.
Do most designs, like, again, sorry, but like, will they give you options of choices, right? Like, the kid with the pool sounds much more doable. Both of us who talked, like, I've been over a long period, you know, the others. I think all my kids, we have school by the time that happens, right? And I just don't have that. But, um, but like exactly, possibly, like, this could be one with six lanes, this could be that. Those are all ways, so people can have choice on what they need. Well, when someone like, this is the affordable scope and this is the luxury scope, so we could see kind of how much money we're talking about.
David come back and tell a lot more, so he just goes.
Diane says we're gonna start playing Powerball. Oh, so is the vision, is possible to keep the pool where it is? Is there a vision to put it in other places? Way to keep that scent practical thing, or is that not, but what it is?
But something that we would have to discuss further on. But yeah, most likely the plan is to keep it where she is. We'd have to work this way.
And I do this. No, you, I'm just asking, if we're demolition, with the parking lot that's there, is that okay?
Probably, I think what the plan would be to probably make it bigger.
Citizens use for school activities, like tennis.
You mean with the demolition?
With demolition, that apparently.
I would say that's.
So, the project originally, what you said, eight, eight point one?
Yeah.
And that's for a town of thirty thousand residents, twenty, twenty-five thousand residents? So, what would Dyke do with that? As far as, if you're saying eight, eight million for a town of thirty thousand versus Dyke town?
Really, it comes down to Dyke cannot afford to build a pool, period. We do not have the funding to build a pool.
What is your bonding, bonding capacity right now?
Six million, we've got about two and a half million tied up. And we have an ambulance that will be bonding for a year.
Year, year, year.
In, in two years, when you could go to vote, would that capacity go up potentially?
It could, it's based on valuation.
So, it could go up a little bit, and you'd be paying that on some debt.
So, that would be November twenty-seventh, right?
Now, mind you, like, as a city though, we don't wanna max out our bonding capacity. Like, that's not, that's not responsible for anybody in town. So, we wouldn't want to put, you know, if we have a six million dollar bonding capacity now, we wouldn't wanna put three and a half million into a pool and then sink ourselves or, God forbid, something catastrophic happening that we're not able to. Do you know what I mean? Like, you wanna be responsible on that level too. So, it will come down to fundraising and how much we can raise up until a certain point in time. So, if in a couple of years, we say, okay, well, then we're gonna kind of on for this amount, or X Y Z. So, say everybody here wants a pool, and we're gonna start fundraising tomorrow, and we come up in two years and say, we're not using the pool. What would happen with that pocket of money? I mean, what if, I mean, what if we, at some point in time, we have to say, this isn't feasible, right? And we, whenever we get there, or we keep fundraising for ten years? Or, I don't know how long that's even feasible.
That's a really good question. If you will take it, yeah. That's why, as you might not, just nobody might not collect at all, but you take a, but. That goes back to that leader. That's before you like the first dollar, you need to know what happens to that dollar if you don't do the work. And then that gets presented. And that, those are the logistical things that I think need to be decided. I, I know what I would do, if they knew, that's my opinion, so.
The other thing is, say you have, say you raise four million dollars and it's a five million dollar project, and you want to bond for that million dollars. And we take a vote, what happens is for the rest of the citizens who are here, vote no. So, now you're out, well, now you're short a million dollars if I try to raise that million dollars again. So, those would be dead or killed, it could happen.
If they go for four hundred thousand dollars, that's a good stimulus. I think it took Randy three or four, three or five votes before that. I think that pool would be built in a little, over eight minutes, three, three and a half minutes out, you know?
What's the budget line item for the pool every year?
About one fifty, five fifty thousand.
Roughly.
Roughly.
It's about fifteen percent of the budget, of the city's total budget.
That's before, that is the revenue, or the, the, the budget and the regular kind of expense.
We brought in about twenty thousand dollars in the last time the pool was open. Doesn't touch the budget.
Yeah, fourteen, yeah.
Which is common, right? Like, pools aren't funding either. So, I'm pretty, we moved here in the part of, what's it called, what's the field? What's it called? It's a comfort, yeah, that was like started. So, like, are there five oh one three C things that are still out there? Like, you could see channels, some of those existing things for.
I'm not talking about.
Yes. So, I suppose.
I think she already knew that, she already knew that.
But that's, there is my possibility down there, I think that we can explore, yeah.
Have you guys valued, let's say magically got eight million dollars in the middle of a pool, what the expense for the city then going forward is?
It depends on how much we're going for. So, if you know.
No, like, you're saying right now it's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year expense for this current, right? And what would that city expense be with a brand-new eight million dollar pool? Is there?
I think there was a question in the back.
Are there current contractors that are, about being looked at for this? Or is this just still kind of out, out there?
We'll contact right now, we really have nothing to send out to them, because we don't have any drawings for building this whole up right today. Oh, you mean as far as demo?
I, no, I mean, I, like, I, that's, that's separate. Work could be included in the contractor, but just going out to a family member's house in Lenox, South Dakota, right at the beginning of this, of our journey here with this pool, I noticed they had a brand-new pool. So, then I just started looking into it more and more. They used an outfit out of Kansas who specializes in pools, and they do the architecture, the installation, the demolition, everything from soup to nuts. And it's, if they bonded for one point seven or one point eight million dollars, and that was in twenty nineteen or something like that, similar-sized talent to this, I think they had four lanes in their pool, zero entry and things like that. But just considering, like, that's, that's a very, you know, mind-numbing number. They're a hundred K just for a plan. If, if we could skinny that down, work it into like a package deal of plan, demolition, I mean, surely there's plans already drawn up that we can rework the site to. We don't need to customize the plans at every little gradient in the existing landscape, so.
I hate to say that, but designing, I guess I will have said.
Yeah.
Designing a pool right now for two thousand twenty-five, if we don't know that it can be built in the next year or two,
Yeah.
we're wasting our money even probably going out to design, because there's gonna be a lot of things that are probably gonna change in the code to some degree.
Yeah.
We can get some budgetary numbers, know where we can start fundraising for, but I don't know that it's in our best interest to spend a hundred thousand dollars in two thousand twenty-five. Would we be in the, we're even gonna get to the point where we can start the pool, period?
That, that was the basis of my concern, yeah.
Not spending that.
Right. I think if you could just approach us and do it, one else would.
We're not, we're willing to, if we go forward, we have to send out a lot of different stuff.
We have to send out RFPs. Pretty important, so we, what's a school development? And then people, I mean, so, I think people, at least, like, when we ask folks about this, like, what are your choices, what are your options? I think people are really overwhelmed, like, that eight million dollars, it's like a shock to the living, right? But, you know, like, honey, you're trying to, you know, plan eighty-year C, how do you even get started? Or, those of us who did meet a couple times, maybe we can't build a pool, right? Are we just too close to a bedroom town that we cannot build a pool? So, then what do we do, right? Do bus kids turn around second running in the summer? What, what are we going to do from a community recreation when it's, gives kids opportunities to learn how to swim, right? Like, maybe that's not the city's responsibility. So, I'm just asking, what are, what are other towns like us, right? What are they, like, are recreating, planning, or that, like, or that hundred thousand would be for the last eight years? I'm just asking. Well, and another thing I was adding, what is it, people, what's the community's community? I mean, I know people who recently, who had no idea that it wouldn't work, and no idea the pool was coming, and come to find out, hey, the pool's never built again, was really a, a shock to them, because they were like, wait a minute, maybe we know that only off the top. So, what is that gonna do, if people come in and say, wow?
Maybe I'm gonna start to shoot some more videos about.
No, like fancy.
No, it's hard to do anything if you're not doing it for two years. My opinion, you have to, you always do some designing work and cost estimates before you can even begin to fundraise. You can't go to anybody and ask them to escort something, they don't know what it is. Customers are involved with direct contacts that I did. We had people that helped us do that, that we showed, we could show them what it was gonna be, or we could show them what it was gonna be. I don't, I think, it's that parrot for the horse or whatever, but you, you're gonna have to spend some money to do the research before you can get there. I don't see any other way of doing it. Always.
They'll give you, they'll give us real close budgetary numbers without going full.
And you're gonna need plans, you're gonna need drawings. People are gonna wanna see what it's gonna look like.
But I'm talking about a little full plan, if you could do design.
Oh, I'm not talking pipes and stuff. They're gonna wanna see a rendition.
Yeah.
What it's gonna look like and cost estimates. I truly believe in order for them to feel comfortable about making a building.
I think part of the reason for this meeting in particular is to see if there is in fact interest, happen to this community, which, given that all of you are here, I'm getting the impression that there is, but, which is awesome, which is awesome. We need somebody that is in charge, that's willing to say, I will take this on for fundraising and start leading this charge, because at the end of the day, the city can only do so much. We have some funds to at least start the planning process, to start getting those renewals, start, start looking at those plans. But we do need somebody to step up and say, I'm willing to, to work on this, to start gathering monies and start working with the city to, so that we can start all working together. And it's going to take like a whole.
Is it gonna be a committee?
Was that, like, you said one person, can it be a committee of people? And then the one person in charge, so it's, so it's one intimidating to one person, being responsible for all that? Yeah. Because I think it will take a committee to go through and be like, alright. Because I think, you're right, one person stepping up and saying, hey, I will take this on, it's going to be me, whoa, 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 that's a lot, that is a lot. And yet, having a committee that's willing to step up and say, okay, but I'm willing to help, and I'm willing to help fundraise, and we're willing to help start going through this, and we're willing to help, like, meeting with the council, I don't know if it's on the regular, or however often we need to, and start getting plans in order. Absolutely. But that's where this meeting is important, to see kind of where we're at.
So, I would strongly encourage a committee, something you're gonna learn, or someone will learn, and if I don't win three seeds, if I have a, a president and all these other things, there's gonna be that top person. Somebody, a committee, you're gonna have, we're gonna have that anyway. Somebody's gotta be the one that's gonna make the decision. A committee, which is great, that's what we have here, to, to kind of bring our group together, there's gotta be, there's gotta be a spearhead. The person that wants to start the committee, that person's gonna have to take the charge. And, and, so getting your. So getting your plans designed, I, I don't know if that's a, a, a senior's responsibility of, and do you know that to contact these people to do that, or? I, is, is that, yes.
Yeah, we have to have RFPs or design.
So that part would be done?
What about grant writing? And we've, I've asked somebody about that before. Is that something that we can do as a committee? Look into the grant writing, is that okay?
It's, and it's something though that's going to be allocated, because I said before, after, like sixty-five percent of the money for the project has really been sold at that point.
Well, I was going to say, I agree with Shannon, you need a committee, but I want to reiterate, I think, I think the city needs to spend the money to get some renditions and cost estimates before, depending what that number is, this girl over here might be thinking, I'll do it, but if it's eight million, I'm not interested, but five million, I might tackle it. I think the city has to make that investment. Just not hold long plans, but here's what we say in conjunction with the rec, with the rec committee, have all the, for more eyes at it, but just to get something in with some input from citizens, but what it would look like and what potentially the cost estimates are, all you have is today. I understand. Who knows what it is two years from now, but it's going to be hard for anybody to be willing to step up to lead that charge if they won't know where they're, where they've gotten it. And I think that's up to the city to make that investment, to take that first step.
So is there a difference between architectural design for a hundred thousand and a rendition and a possible budget? The two different things and two different jobs? So I understand renditions can be a lot of experience.
Would it be as simple as just contacting a couple of full companies, like this is what we've done for last year. This is roughly what they gave us all, but they, you know, and they can show us a fair couple of options that each company has. And it just, I mean, that would be a certain point, I don't know if they have these plans, like this is our face back, this is our next package type of thing. I don't know if that's a thing. But if they could just provide that and it's rough, you know, they obviously don't know what's, for all the, you know, the, you know, stuff. But they at least get, you know, a certain, a certain thing.
Well, if you go through a few steps, like you said, to get bid and out to, to do that. Maybe the person that does the rendition is not the one that actually is rebuilding it. We can get that. Like you say, we have several in the area that have been built these last years and ready to move forward. We have some, so, we have something to compare to, but that is, kind of, I think it's part of the meeting tonight is to see what the difference was with the pool or not.
So the timeline, putting out RFPs, if we intend to this plan like that before the first year, I think that we got a fall thing, it's already paid, the budget's already there. I know some has to go to demolition, but like, it's just, it's just weird.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, they won't make any action tonight. So we'll put it on the October meeting, saying before it was an RFP, it's not possible to buy it, get a number, and it's on the RFPs. Yeah, I was, I don't know if all, but how to mention it, very. We only need one month, so. Yes, it's feasible on a specific year.
Our meeting's in two weeks. Y'all are welcome. But either way, I understand that you guys are going to go ahead and rip out the whole pool now and fill it in with dirt and then come what may later down the road, just then we can install it. We have to get bids for that. And we're currently, Rob is currently working on that.
I mean, should we wait to rip it out until we've contacted a few of these companies and know whether or not it should be part of the process of an install? Because I mean, it might be overlapping and doing work twice at that point.
We've, we've, we've already looked, we've already looked at the structure of the pool and we tried to shake some order. We just, it needs, something needs to happen now. We have a liability, someone jumped the fence, all those other things, state, data processing takes, right? Would you say credit for that? How long do you take credits?
If three to five votes are put into it, it's going to be years.
Yeah, it could be years from now before we actually able to get this done. We added funds now to get that process started. It's something we probably should for the sake of the citizens, to get it taken care of now.
My wife's actually had, excuse me, had a pool opening tonight for Cedar Falls. The process there, I know it went to barn two or three times before it passed. And I think the, like you guys mentioned, the rendering, we saw rendering of that before it ever went to the barn. I think a rendering would be a fantastic idea, just so you can get the grand scheme of thing of what we think we want, rather than paying the big amount to do the actual design. And I think by adding a rendering, if the community wants it, I think people would be more willing to donate and, and help in that process. And that, they're on, I said, they're jumping in the pool tonight and Cedar Falls, and that's been a two and a half, three year process. And from the building standpoint, obviously a little bit different scale, but it's definitely a long process. There's going to be out there that's decisions overnight by any means.
I'm thinking, just as seeing this gauge, because I, by the way, my name's Adam Stamper, I do a lot of city council meetings all the time. Gauging by how many people are here, it sounds like just great community interest, and I'm with everybody else that we should probably invest some money to get those RFPs, to get some of the least early preliminary engineering estimates or cost estimates, which is obviously not going to be the hundred grand. It's going to be a lot less than that because you're not doing all the nuts and bolts, you're not figuring out the details. But when you do that, you do need to tell them like, hey, we want it here, we want it this size, and then they can get at least three concepts to you to see what you actually want to have in it, and then get you an idea, then they could do those architectural renderings and stuff, so you can actually get an idea what this thing's going to look like. And a ballpark idea, because eight million just sounds like a lot, and that's a really big, I think you'd be done for a lot less. Just how much less? Just my two cents.
The town of Jewels, which is about to sit inside of their building, the new school, where they're thinking about it, and they're working on it. And my grandmother sent me some of their their number. She said three point two, what they're looking at. And we started telling her, so I didn't just hear it, but I only have another and they're about, if you were to be according to the thousands, you would be able to try and.
Amlynken is in the process of trying to build a pool too, and some of the numbers that they gave me were their current, because they've been trying for a while, so then they got some numbers for estimates, and for a four lane pool was around two point three million. And for the six lane, it was about two point eight. And her comment was just, we don't, we're not looking for anything fancy, we're looking at a basic design. But those were the differences in the lanes. But those are just a couple of comments I've heard from people around here too. We don't need, quote, anything fancy, what we have was similar. But I don't know exactly the size, but that would be some, some of an idea of numbers that they've got too. She gave me a couple of pool design guys too that they have worked with. I don't know for sure.
Even fundraising for a.
Yeah, and they have not. Yeah, and they don't have any bonding capacity, so it's been fundraisers and grassroots there.
Yeah, I think we're looking for a thought, but like, there's some different kids that.
Completely out of my realm of knowledge here, but if the school is going to be utilizing the pool, can some funding from the school go towards the pool as well?
No, 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 some team likes schools, some team.
No.
Like. Oh, I thought you were like the school. No, no, yeah.
I gotta get that instead of earlier. Okay, see, if y'all already know, the pool is actually sitting on school property. What did that change?
We found it. I found it.
I found it, I'm not legal. I think I was mistaken.
But rapid mall court, rapid mall court in this school, why can't we, we can't stop this school.
Court of market law, this is our. Eight million dollars, what is the attendance at the pool? I have three boys, all lifeguards, and there were many a days they said they couldn't get five kids to keep the pool.
Well, I did some digging.
But that was the minimum number was five people.
So in two thousand twenty-three, was the last year the pool was opened, it went down to seventy-one days. So, and then I went through and did, printed all the numbers on patrons that were there. Thirty-one days of the summer, there were forty or less patrons. Twenty-nine days, there were forty to sixty-nine patrons, and seventy or more patrons were eleven days out of the whole summer.
Do you have information from a few years prior to that? Because they'll say this maybe not based on the last year's.
Two thousand twenty going forward.
Is that happening like per family? Because I feel sometimes you just write like your last name, I wouldn't write like, I would not write that.
I was just like, I didn't write your name. I don't, I don't question some of the accuracy, maybe not.
I have, let's be true, my school did. But I will say, just being in my position and working with the pool since I started, the attendance every year goes lower and lower and lower, our staffing numbers go lower and lower. We only have thirteen lifeguards that were open last. We need an average of twenty to fully run a pool full time.
I think there are communities.
Is, is that even possible with all these? I don't know when the firm is doing this, you know, like how many kids were in town, is that compared to how many children are there in the county now?
It's only seventy-seven.
So a lot of communities partner with, like you and I teach a lot of lifeguard training classes. They do a lot of partnerships with school districts, try to figure out how do you do some of that training, even in a school day, like that's really common in a lot of communities, in part of your colleges and community colleges. So I actually think there's a lot of possibilities we can do from a staffing side, that's like, I have hundreds of teams, I love that, I have a hundred. But I think that's, but I, I think that's part of it. Do you have the people that want to go? I think for a lot of families, understanding what does that family pool cost, all those kinds of things, and hours. That can't be the city's job, Lindsay posting on Facebook, like, we have to have a manager who can really do some of that, because that's just too much, I think, somewhat on a city. But I think there's a lot of good leadership opportunities, internships, just a lot of, I have a lot of my students that work, being surrounded by schools, there are teachers, like, I think there's, there are some things that we can do, but it's going to be, we'll have to be dedicated to that as well. I think that has to be part of.
And we can't pay, I'll spur that up, if we cannot pay. It's like last week's. Last time we were open, we paid ten dollars an hour if you were here and eleven dollars not.
Yeah, I mean, right now, if you go to a water, like a water park, they get over a hundred, they're just taking it up to twenty dollars. So like, we, we can't compete with that, and you're right, so there's, there's probably not a decent incentive of retention for lifeguards, I mean, there's just lots of different ways to feed it, but also people might want to pay more for a day like that, right? So your walls have to be structured, your pool cost up, like, I think that's part of the reality of if we decide to do this.
So where are you going to find the help to lift this pool if we build it? Because the last two years, we've been finding nobody. I think a couple of years ago, they shut down the month of August, which is that. I mean, we built an eight million dollar pool, and we can't run it, we don't have that.
Whenever. But I, I, like I said, I, this is something that I would totally do for the community, and I, like, I think that's what it is, right? We have to have somebody willing to take some help with it.
And, I mean, Amy Myers, the local school major, she stepped up big time, and really tried to get kids certified and. We worked with you and I, we worked with worker on certification. We ran first certifications, and you worked the whole summer, so you definitely present yourself in front of the fans.
You mentioned the ownership of the land being the city's, but I always heard that there was no pool that would go back to school, is that accurate or not?
Is there a time, sorry, contact? Like, if we don't have a pool this fall, and we don't build a new one for five, six years, is that?
Sure we put a sign in.
I think it's still our community.
Hard to have a castle take over.
Nathan mentioned a survey. In the survey, is there, is there a question about, like, would you be willing to participate in fundraising?
I'll read what my survey says. So first question was, are you a resident of Dyke? Do you argue in favor of a new pool in Dyke? Have you attended any city council meetings regarding the pool discussions? Did you attend the council meeting tonight? So this isn't going to be just tonight, by the way. This will get sent out at the park with Lindsay. This isn't my survey, but Lindsay will send it out. So question five, at this time, there has not been any individual or individuals committed to seeing this project through, or being the leader. This is expected to be a large project, but yes, with many aspects other than raising money. And then I said, are you willing to help with the pool project? And first one says, yes, I would like to be one of the leaders in seeing this project through to the end. Yes, I'm interested in providing insights, the values of expertise. Yes, I would be interested in limited capacity, example, a subcommittee, or no. Are you in favor of spending funds to begin the design phase of the pool? First answer is yes, do it now even without any need. Second answer is yes, but we should, we should leave. We should know who will lead this project and should improve or not. Would you be able and willing to frequently donate to raising the, raising the funds for the pool? My answers were, yes, I would make donation of ten thousand plus. Yes, I would contribute five hundred more a year. Yes, I would contribute a hundred, five hundred a year. Yes, I will contribute one hundred a year, or no. Eight, is, is this even a viable project? Yes, no, maybe? And then a spot where you can put your information as far as if you wanted to contact it, be helping in any capacity, and then just a spot for any other comments.
Did you say this was, I mean, is this even possible? I don't know, but have you asked the school, have you got your board to the school, do you know what I mean? Indoor? With, you know, like, like the junior high, what do you call it, is what do you say? They have an indoor school. They have an indoor school. And you can roll in, you can.
The Cedar Falls pool is called.
It's true.
You gave us five.
Like five million.
And that was like, the, 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 the performance, like it's a full, like, separate.
I think, I think the problem with that is. The deal provides.
Eight million now?
In fact, it's only nine.
But we're gonna use it all year long now.
Is anybody stuck up and said they're interested in leading the charge? That's why we're here.
There was a group of us, I don't know, six or seven of us that went to the library one time. And then we all walked away and. I mean, yeah. So I mean, that's what, I, I have attended several of the city council meetings in the last, I mean, yeah, several months and have been the ones probably annoyingly putting the pool on the agenda just for us to keep chatting about it. And so with that, we just got a group together and started just asking a lot of questions about what would this look like? Who would have some interest in being a partisan group? And it was a group of, of a lot of moms that, that got together and Nathan and we, it was, it was overwhelming thinking about, I think all of us are feeling already stretched in many different directions. And to be able to fully take on, to be the leader of this project is going to be, it was undertaking and responsibility. So I think everybody involved in that, there would be, probably strictly a committee that would be more than willing to help out and provide whatever expertise they can. But it's hard to be able to take the lead on this sizable project.
Well, and we don't even know how long this project.
Right, yeah.
And we're not talking like, okay, could you do this for the next two years? We're talking that this could be five, six years. I mean, before we even have, you know, any kind of feasible money.
Right, yeah. I mean, that's hard, how do you commit to a, a word like that for that long? Yeah. So that's what we just thought. It was nice to get everybody together tonight to see if there's even an interest to the community as a whole.
I think.
Go ahead.
I really don't think we know what we have. I think that we have a lot of people here tonight. But I think if you take a show of hands, who would like to spend money to get some arrangements done, have a general cost of, you know, some kind of an idea. We need to put this to bed pretty soon or we move forward. I think with eight million dollars, I don't really personally see a path forward. I think it's three or four. I think that's cool. And I think you're going to get more interest in it, so. I just think we should probably take vote right now. Who wants to spend the money? Move forward or start, let's just go.
How much money is involved in putting out an RFP, letting it soak for a month or however, whatever the law says it has to, and then getting responses back? What, do we have to pay for any of that? Or is that just calling for bids and then people look for work?
Putting out there what we're looking for probably for revenues and seeing how they're gonna come back and how much detail we want. Looking for a chance to come back, so we've got some price on it soon. It'll be a little bit more to it than just trying to pick it up and call. There'll be a lot of questions back to us who are shared.
Some cues involved.
I'm sure there will be.
We have to face a pain, something.
To prepare the documents, there's some clues. I mean, you're not going to pay the bids.
Right, right.
No, no. I think, you know, if you can, you start with, we want, I have no clue what square foot is the current pool. Forty five hundred square foot pool with six lanes and a bath house. Give us some ideas. You can be very generic at this point, just to get some guesstimates on dollars.
That's something the city has to do, not like the committee. So that's something we have to wait for you guys to do before we even put the meeting together.
So how would that, on the October meeting, so they can make, so they can make their resolution to move forward?
I got a question. Have you put any effort at all into looking at busing the children to another pool contracted with somebody? If you're talking forty kids, I grew up in a small town. We did it twice a week, Tuesdays and Wednesdays, they bused us to a pool. And we did that all, the whole time. I, I don't think we've got, if you're, if the city's not going to have money. I was on the city council in West Union, but we went through the same thing. But the city bonded for half of the cost. They were able to raise and get grants for that, but it took three years. So we've already been out, what, two or three years now without the kids having that service? And that's basically what it is. It's a service. You're not going to make any money at all. It's a cost to the city. How much are we willing to spend without having that service? I suggest you just look at possibly doing that, even if you go and look at going towards trying to fund this, but at least give the kids the service in the meantime. It's going to take you two, three, four years before you're going to have a pool. Has anybody looked at what it would cost to bust them to Grundy or Ryan Mecher?
No, that's something we have to look at.
Yeah, I, I would suggest that's where you might want to. Even if you do this, you might want to start looking at that. Get your, your parking reg committee to take a look at it because I think that's the best solution. And then once you've got that going, you might find out that that's the way to go. If not, then you have to take time for people to see if they can fund, fund.
We'll say that somebody had brought that to our attention at one point in time, doing some busing. And some of the things that got brought up were that these days, definitely, we have to, the city itself has to have insurance to be able to cart kids. All of the buses have to be rented from the school and/or the school bus drivers that are willing to drive them, which is a whole nother thing as well. And then there had to be supervision, which if nobody's willing to step up to supervise all of these kids on this bus and all of the kids that are going to be down there, it would be dead in the water. And that's where we ran into, is that you just didn't have anybody. Because these days, you can't just send the kids to the pool or send them down on the bus and then expect that lifeguards are going to be making serves.
At that point, the bus driver did it, super big.
So like, why here is one of the things that they do have contact, which will maybe actually be part of their city. So that makes some why. I, I agree. Bringing up another idea, because that is a very common job.
Because the kids are the ones who.
And that could be something I'd be looking to, for the summer, like white guy would be an option. Because that was, that was one of the things, a couple of things that got brought up was that you had to do supervision for those things that they could only do that, but what if you get, you would need, there was, there's a lot that went into it.
Will you say that? The bus driver always stayed here. She had somebody with her that was one of the children. Wouldn't that be cheaper than paying all the lifeguards? I mean, you're talking about, oh, they get days ten dollars an hour.
They were not, they were not there supervising the children, no.
Yeah, they haven't supervised.
No, I, I worked there for several years when they were coming. They had, they were, they were there to buss them there and they sat there and if kids needed things, they came up to them. They were not standing passively watching guard over the pool.
Well, no, they weren't lifeguards.
No, not so, but so they, I mean, they were not, I would say, even in the sense of supervision.
If I put a van, if I took a van of kids to the pool, I don't have to supervise them all. I mean, I would be there and jump a napkin. But what I'm saying is, so they have.
Yeah, and that's why I think it would have to be.
We wouldn't have to have a supervisor lifeguard if they knew them.
Whatever.
I know, there's been a lot of talk about, right, expenses and stuff too. But what gets lost, there's not a lot of talk about the expenses of the pool and stuff. But what gets lost sometimes too is how the kids losing amenities in the community can affect your property values and stuff like that. So then, once your property values drop, your tax space drops, things like that. So there is kind of back and forth. And we have other things going on with other amenities in the community that are not city controlled. But, you know, it is a concern as well. And so if we start losing some of these amenities in the community, then what happens to our property values? What happens to that tax base for the people? I know a lot of times it's easy to trick say, and then numbers that we know, but there's also some numbers that we don't know.
There anything else? Otherwise, we'll do, go ahead.
Forgive me for asking, but is the swim team basically the one driving like the, the six or seven or eight, eight lane pool as far as the length goes or driving kind of the cost of the project north or?
Not necessarily. So we don't have to have those six lanes? Like, that's not a. We don't have to, but if we want to have a swim team. And I think that, I think that would be only to host meetings. There's probably the possibility that we could still. Have a team. Probably have a team. We probably wouldn't be able to host meets if we didn't have the six lanes. But that would definitely be open. And that's just me making an assumption too.
If you add, if you add a zero entry on the one end of the pool, you're not going to have six lanes to race in. Where, how would the?
Your design.
Your design.
We have six, six lanes.
Yeah, where would the zero?
Maybe we could do a design.
Could be a whole different area.
Yeah.
But if you're trying to cut costs, you could hit a six lanes pool, what's in that? That's what we would look.
Which I'll comment on that, if the person leading the charge is part of the swim team, they're going to want the six lanes.
Yeah.
If the person that steps up does not, then they'd have the option to pick the smaller version, save money, make it more feasible. And that's our ask, if someone steps up, put that in their court.
Does a swim team bring revenue to the pool? I guess that would be a big break issue as well. So like, we're hosting a meet, does that bring in revenue? Is that the benefit of having extra lanes to be able to do stuff like that? And then that, that would be a. The benefit is for having, just having a swim team to be, to have a swim team or whatnot, but I don't know that necessarily has a lot of presence to the town itself hosting that way.
All right, so I, I've heard a couple different people saying that we should maybe do the vote. So my, my, my survey is going to do something very similar to that. We can do a public showing of hands. The thing, I, I, it makes me no difference, but it sounds like the consensus would be that we should proceed with the, the rendering, drawing to try to at least see what the, the basics can be. I, I would agree that I think that expenses could be much less than a hundred thousand. I don't know how much less, but I, I, when you don't do all the voting, it's going to be much less, right? So.
So with the show at Man, who would like to see us move forward, at least getting renderings or start this process of trying to get some rough numbers? Okay, we will put it on the October agenda. On the flip side, who would prefer that we not move forward with this process?
Thank you, everyone.